Call to order the August 24th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember France for our ceremonial opening.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now move to recognitions, reports, and presentation. We have a lot of special guests in our audience today. We'll start with Ian, who's from Troop 212 earning his citizenship and community badge. Ian, will you please? There he is. Our next special guest is one all of us recognize. He's here every year, and he's synonymous with the Cary Lazy Days, and that's our town crier from Markham, Canada, John Webster.
Thank you, your worship. I am honored to be here once again in front of your council to say thank you for allowing me to be your official town crier. As I've traveled throughout different parts of the world and so forth, I'm mentioning that I am a town crier from Markham and Aurora and so on, and Cary, North Carolina. And they don't care about Markham, they don't care about Aurora, and the other ones, they say Cary? How can you be the town crier from Cary? And so I explain. And then they ask, where is Cary? What's it all about? And it gives me an opportunity to talk about what a great place it is, about the diversity that is here, about the high-tech capital of the United States as far as I'm concerned, and the great council and people that are here as well. Gives me the opportunity to be a goodwill ambassador for you, and to talk about the Sister Cities organization and what that's all about as well. It's really fantastic. Now, I've been at a bunch of places this year. I was interviewed on CBC, which is the Canadian Broadcasting Corporation, on their radio, and was able to do a great discussion about Cary on that as well. And then just last week, I was on canoe FM, which is in cottage country north of Toronto, shows which direction my radio career is going, but was able to talk about Cary there as well, and about Lazy Days. So if you have people coming down here from Canada, it's probably because I told them. But there's other exciting things that happened. I was at a town crier competition and was able to win first place in the Muskoka Escapades Competition.
All right. So I'm proud to be representing you, and on here, it says all those other places, and Cary, North Carolina, down at the bottom here. You probably don't know where Brace Bridge is. Brace Bridge is right on the 45th parallel, which is halfway between the equator and the North Pole. And so it's a bit of a spot. They have a resident Santa Claus is there, he spends his summer there. But this little piece of stone in the middle is a piece of the Canadian Shield. And these are, when we're canoeing in the area, we want to make sure we don't take those rocks for granite. But that's in there to show the stability and so on, and I'm very proud on behalf of all the other criers to be able to bring this down and say Cary gets to say, hey, we've got the champion town crier for a year, and then I have to go and try to reclaim it again. Here's that.
No pressure.
And as well, I wanted to bring a bit of history down. Now, I understand that you're all coming up. That sounds like the States, doesn't it? You're all, or all you all?
Y'all.
Y'all are coming up to celebrate our 150th year of not only of the Confederation of Canada, but also its Ontario's 150th year as well. Because without getting into a lot of history, that was Upper and Lower Canada joining together to make Canada. We're a little presumptuous, because of course Newfoundland didn't join until 1948, but we're letting them in on the party as well anyway. But we decided back at the turn of the century that we should probably have a historic book. And so we formed a committee. This year, we got the book done. Partway through, we discovered we needed to hire a writer, because it was getting more than most of us. The interesting thing about writing a history book is, it's not what you put in it, it's what you have to leave out. Because we went around talking to people and finding out about their personal histories and trying to figure out how that should work. And wow, we've got enough to write three or four books, we'll probably get it on a web at some point. But the part I'm particularly interested in is the picture on the back. Well, it's actually on the front, too. We tried to decide what the picture should look like. And because Markham's motto is leading while remembering, we thought we should have it with the historic buildings, and you'll notice that up here is a big skyscraper with a crane where it's building the new residences. And we have a bunch of young people there that we tried to figure out how to make that show the diversity, so that it's, without being too blatantly obvious, we tried to be careful to do that properly. And then an elderly gentleman, which could be a grandfather figure or something or other, and they're all walking towards the future. The fun part was to try to get them, the kids were fairly simple, but try to get a picture of somebody that would characterize that from the back. And I was charged with going up to Markham Fair, where they have a demonstration of steam and old tractors and all that kind of stuff, and take pictures of the backs of some of the older people that were there, so we could decide which one we were going to ask. And of course, we had to get the proper legal things and so forth. I could not get them to turn around. They wanted to stand there and smile in front of their tractor and so forth, and they couldn't get the idea that I wanted them to turn around so I could take a picture of the back of them. So I had to take the picture, and then when they returned to walk away, I'd snap the picture of the back. So I think I have the only collection of all the historic people's backs in the city of Markham. But anyway, with that aside, Mr. Mayor, I would like to present this to you to pass on to the council, and perhaps it'll be in the library and passed around so people can see it. So I will give this to you. There you are. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if I may usurp your time just a little bit, because the Sister Cities Commission is so important, I'd like to present this to the representative from the Sister Cities. Where is somebody from the Sister Cities? Here he comes. Because the Sister Cities is important. You know, the communities are changing. The Sister Cities, us being down here, we're getting to learn a lot about people and different cultures and so on. And it's having a business effect as well. When they knew I was coming down, we brought the band down last year, and one of the people from the band said, I found a fantastic place to get orthotics for my shoes. Can you buy me three pairs and bring them back? So there's a little commerce happening, and at the same time, I've hired a consultant for my company, and he lives in Cary and works in Cary, so there is that back and forth across the border. Our political people, President Trump and Prime Minister Trudeau and President, I've forgotten his name, from Mexico. Anyway, you know, they can all get together and pontificate and make discussions about how we're going to do trade and how we're going to do commerce and that sort of stuff. And it comes right back down to the grassroots of the Sister City people. Well, the people that are the Sister Cities that actually will put things together, and no matter what the governments decide, this is the way it's going to be. It's the free enterprise that our nations were built on that will eventually make it all work. I'll get off my philosophical soapbox now, but I'd like to present you with a copy of this as well, so that you can pass that around to Sister Cities people.
Thank you, John. Thank you so much.
Having been on council at one time, I know that you want to get home before the sun comes back up again, and so I know there's a big agenda, I'm going to disappear, but I gotta mention, don't forget, everybody is required to be at Lazy Days on Saturday and Sunday. Thank you. We'll see you there. I know many of our citizens are going to be coming out, and they're looking forward to hearing that bell ring and hearing your proclamations.
Don't we normally get an example of what we're going to see on Lazy Days?
I don't know if he's going to do it or not. Uh-oh, here we go.
He was just waiting to be out.
Oh, yea, oh, yea, oh, yea. My lords, ladies, all ye in attendance, gather round. As the official town crier for the town of Cary, I have an announcement of great importance. It is a well-known fact that there are two major reasons why people should come to Cary. And one of those is Lazy Days. Lazy Days is on Saturday and Sunday, there are vendors, there are all kinds of entertainment, all kinds of food from all around the world, and of course, an international garden where people can have a beverage of some sort if they decide to. There will be such merriment and dancing in the streets, the likes of which have never before been seen, and ye are all invited, nay commanded, to attend. God save the Queen of Canada, and God bless these United States of America. Perfect. Thank you. But now I've got to transition to my serious things and go to Public Speaks Out. So our next agenda item, called Public Speaks Out, has instructions for speaking on the printed agenda, and if you would like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. And that works to your advantage, because in a public hearing, you get more time to speak. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, and once you've reached three minutes, I'm not trying to be rude, but I will interrupt you. There's a timer on the podium, and it'll start off with a green light, and when the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and when the yellow light turns to a flashing red light, that's the point, I will interrupt you and ask that you immediately conclude your comments. To help make our speaking more efficient, I asked that if you're here with a group, have a spokesperson speak for the group. And avoid repetitive comments. And also, if you'd like to speak after the person that's at the podium, if you would take a stand over there at the steps, so we don't have all that waiting time for the next speaker. And as you come down the steps, make sure you hand your form or your card to the town clerk, so that we may get in touch with you in the future if we need to. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting, and please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats or anything else that may distract from this meeting. And now's the time for Public Speaks Out. If you'd like to speak on anything that's not a public hearing, I would invite you forward and invite the first speaker at this time.
Good evening, mayors and members of council. My name is Glenda Stoppin with Glenda S. Stoppin &amp; Associates. On your agenda tonight is a request to amend the Chatham-Cary Joint Land Use Plan Amendment. What we are requesting is to go from low-density residential and office and institutional to medium-density residential and office and institutional. The portion of the joint land use plan that we are looking at is located in Weldon Ridge, PDD, and is also within the town limits of Cary. The proposed amendment is consistent with the guidelines and principles of the joint plan, and also with the relevant policies of the Cary Community Plan. When Weldon Ridge was approved in 2004, it did have a school site and an adjacent residential site. When the joint plan was adopted in 2012, the joint plan took those uses, and that's what the land use designations were for the plan. The proposed amendment maintains the densities that were in place at the time the joint plan was adopted. The portion of the joint plan currently designated as LDR should have been designated as MDR when the joint plan was adopted in order to be consistent with the existing density at the time. For Weldon Ridge, the density in these areas were always greater than two units per acre. As identified in your staff report, the proposed amendment is consistent with the three guiding principles of the Chatham-Cary Joint Land Use Plan. As per the interlocal agreement with Chatham County and Cary, before rezoning can be considered, the joint plan must be amended if the rezoning request is not in compliance with the joint plan. This is the case here. This past Monday night, the Chatham Board of Commissioners voted unanimously to approve the amendment to the joint plan, and the board was very supportive. The next step, based on the interlocal agreement, is for Cary to take action on the proposed land use plan amendment. If approved, then that allows the rezoning for Weldon Ridge to come forward. Without the vote of approval, that would not happen. With the rezoning, what this means is there would be a neighborhood meeting, there'd be a public hearing, and there would be an opportunity to evaluate the proposed changes to the Weldon Ridge PDD. And of course, council will have the opportunity to determine if the proposed changes are appropriate. We believe that by approving the amendment to the joint land use plan, the opportunity will exist for this portion of Weldon Ridge and the joint land use plan to develop as envisioned when both were approved. We ask for council's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stoppin. Next speaker for Public Speaks Out. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
My name's Ilona Fagan. Thank you for listening to the public tonight. I live in the subdivision behind the Cary Town Center, so I'd like to talk about the proposal for IKEA.
That's a public hearing. You'll get more time if you wait for the public hearing.
I'm sorry, this is my first time at a council meeting.
Welcome, we're glad you're here. I'm going to invite you up first.
It'll come up.
It'll come up in about five minutes. You're welcome. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out and we'll move to the consent agenda.
Oh, somebody's coming.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll reopen Public Speaks Out. We have another speaker.
I'm Katrina Hayes, a resident of Cary. I was here two weeks ago at the board meeting informing the board of the privacy invasions of my home. I would like to say it's been two weeks. I haven't heard from the mayor, I haven't heard from law enforcement, and I do have a letter from Time Warner Cable stating that they would willingly cooperate with law enforcement. I want to present three questions to the mayor before my next visit. And the questions are: One, do you think your unwillingness to deal with the situation harms or help it? Number two, do you think that a mediocre or an effective leader condones hate and oppression? And three, if you were unwilling as a mayor to deal with a challenge face-to-face, why did you run? Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Next speaker for Public Speaks Out, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out and we'll move to the consent agenda. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. We have 17 CPA 01, Weldon Ridge. We have 17 REZ, Terramore Resoning. We have consistency statement for 17 REZ 03. We have 17A 03, Green Level West Road and Maple Springs Drive Annexation. We have ratification of resolutions for Regency Woods II Development Plan, Silverton Swim Club modification request, ratification of resolution for Hawthorne and Parkside Development Plan, Cary Academy Science Building modifications request. Would councilmembers like any of these items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to the fifth item on the agenda, is public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Instead of three minutes to speak, you now have five minutes to speak. Our first public hearing is Item 2017 ACT 01, Land Development Ordinance Amendments. Ms. Beerman of our staff will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board. The item will return to council at a future meeting for action. Ms. Beerman.
Good evening, mayor and council. I would like to start tonight with a few big-picture comments on the Land Development Ordinance Amendments in general. The Imagine Cary Community Plan was adopted in January of this year, and the Land Development Ordinance is an important implementation tool that will help us realize the built environment that's envisioned in the plan. Development-related regulations, which are so critical to the implementation of the plan initiatives, are contained primarily in the Land Development Ordinance. However, there are also some other regulations, policies, and guidelines that also contribute to creating our built environment. And amendments to all of these will be needed as we move forward from the present to create the future that's envisioned in the plan. The LDO amendments before you tonight are the first amendments that have been initiated since the plan was adopted, and so we're using this as an opportunity to start a new naming system for development-related amendments, which will now be called Act Items. Previously, we referred to LDO amendments as rounds, the most recent ones you've seen, rounds 36, 37, 38. And starting tonight, we will no longer be using that term, and so that this first set of amendments will now be called 17 Act 1. And this is a change to include the year in referring to amendments, but more importantly, it's a nod to Chapter 9 of the Act, chapter of the Cary Community Plan, which contains all of the initiatives and actions of the plan. Act items in the future will also include plan updates, for example, Water Resources Plan or Open Space Master Plan, if there are new plans amended or changed. Changes to any manuals or guidelines, such as the Community Appearance Manual, and possibly even code amendments, such as minimum housing or other items, and the code of ordinances that are reflective of the development-related regulations. And over the next several years, we expect to be making a major push to prioritize and bring, hopefully, many Act amendments forward to you for consideration, and all of this in the spirit of creating Cary's future built environment that's envisioned through the You'll also see some changes in how these items are presented to you. We're now classifying each LDO amendment into one or more of five categories based on the purpose. The first category is for changes that involve major plan initiatives that affect large areas or sites and areas of strategic importance. So these will be major amendments. They will not come forward as often as some of the smaller amendments. A second category involves more incremental or focused changes that support various plan policies or actions. And one of the amendments presented tonight falls into this category, and the downtown manager will speak on this shortly. The examples listed on this slide are amendments that are anticipated in Act 2, and we expect to bring that forward to you in the next couple of months. The third category is for amendments that are needed to maintain compliance with federal or state legislation. There is one change proposed tonight that falls into this category, and that's a simple clarification related to public notification. A fourth category are process improvements, and these ensure that our procedures and timelines should be commensurate with the potential impact of a development. And a key objective in these amendments will be to avoid procedural steps for which any additional time or resource use is not likely to contribute to a better outcome when the project is developed. And two of tonight's amendments fall into that category. And finally, there's a category for items that simply correct or clarify existing wording to improve the administration of the ordinance. So in your staff report, you will see a table showing how the various amendments are categorized, and you can expect to see a similar table in each amendment series that comes forward in the future. Most of the changes presented tonight are considered to be minor legal, procedural, or technical changes, and are collectively referred to as Item B. Item A is more substantive, and its need was first realized in the downtown area, so Ted Boyd will present this item at this time.
Good evening, council. Item A is an amendment to add special event centers as a use. It really was birthed out of downtown, as it's continued to evolve in wanting to see new businesses come down, and while it would apply townwide, that's sort of where it was birthed to see this need. You're looking at a picture of the Matthews House, and you may say, wait a minute, we already have a special event center in downtown, and we do, so we have that use. But as the time that the Matthews House was approved, it was actually approved as indoor recreation, because the language fit the appropriate categories for that use. It's since changed. And then the other use that is in place is for club, lodge, or hall use. And that's really limited to exclusively members or members' guests. An example would be the American Legion. And again, it's not its sole use, it's ancillary use. So the special event center use category would provide a venue for the express purpose of hosting private assemblies, regardless of membership. The special event center could also be used for education and training purposes, and such uses could include an onsite kitchen or food preparation area for the purpose of serving the guests, but not the general public, so it wouldn't function as a restaurant. It might also include outdoor space for tables, seating to accommodate event guests, but the outdoor space may not be greater than the indoor space. And then the parking standards for the special event center, they must take into account the outdoor space as well, but that requirement would be based upon the applicable zoning district and sub-district. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mary.
So Item B includes a total of eight smaller amendments. I will only touch on the two of these that relate to process improvements, and the remainder are in your staff report, and if there's any questions, we'll be glad to answer that. So Item B 2 would restore some previously existing ordinance language that was inadvertently deleted, that would allow the planning director to grant minor setback encroachments due to certain site constraints, or when a request is made prior to starting construction. There are currently five pending requests for these minor encroachments that all involve detached dwellings and accessory structures, and those five requests will require action by the Zoning Board of Adjustment if this language is not restored to the ordinance. And finally, Item B 3 is a procedural item that would simplify the rezoning process in the mixed-use overlay district in certain cases where the proposed district that an applicant would request is very similar to the existing district. That concludes staff's comments following the public hearing. Will be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Beerman. Now's the time for the public hearing, 2017 ACT 01, Land Development Ordinance Amendments, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and this will be deferred or re-ordered. or referred to the Land Development Ordinance Amendments to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and their recommendation. That takes us to our next public hearing, five point two, Cary Town Center. Ms. Granton of our staff will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this item tonight. It'll be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and their recommendation, and will return to us at a future meeting, probably in excess of two months, is my guess. Ms. Granton.
Good evening. For your consideration is a request to rezone a portion of the Cary Town Center property located at eleven oh five Walnut Street on approximately twenty point one five acres. Subject properties highlighted here in yellow south of the Triangle Aquatic Center, adjacent to the Ivy Meadows subdivision and the Walnut Hills subdivision. Here's a zoomed-in aerial view showing the subject property includes the now vacant Sears property and the Macy's building along with a portion of the food court. As you may know, the Cary Town Center Mall opened in nineteen seventy-nine with approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of retail space. It thrived and grew in the nineteen nineties. It went up to one point one million square feet, including the out parcels. And then we saw some big changes. Sears closed in twenty fifteen. Macy's closed in twenty sixteen. And that cute little restaurant that used to be, you know, a French café is closed now. I went there to meet somebody for lunch the other day. It wasn't there anymore. So the mall is definitely changing. The existing zoning is general commercial conditional use. Some of the conditions that were originated back in nineteen eighty-six and revised in eighty-seven, nineteen ninety, included two hundred and fifty-foot building setback from Ivy Meadows, a large buffer adjacent to the Ivy Meadows subdivision, very detailed site design standards, and the preservation of a large red oak tree. There was also a zoning condition that any buildings on the site would not exceed the height of the Hudson Belk store. It didn't specify how tall that would be. The existing store is about thirty-four feet tall. But just that was the way zoning conditions were crafted back in nineteen eighty-six. There was also zoning conditions that got very detailed and specific about the type of planting material in the buffer adjacent to Ivy Meadows. For example, Leyland cypress trees, which we've now learned are not the ideal planting material. But it did call for a fence. It called for a berm. And there is a good bit of privacy separating the mall property from this adjacent residential development. So what's changed since nineteen ninety? Well, we know the oak tree is no longer there. That did not survive very long after these ordinances were put into place. But something else changed. We had the Imagine Cary process, and we adopted the Cary Community Plan. And with the adoption of this new way of looking at Cary, it created opportunities such as the creation of the Eastern Cary Gateway and the Special Planning Area. And this subject property falls within this Special Planning Area. The Growth Framework Map designates this area for mixed-use commercial. And by being within a Special Planning Area, there are opportunities for a new way of looking at development. In other words, the Cary Community Plan recognizes the opportunity for revitalization of the Cary Town Center. Lets us know that this is an opportunity to rethink the traditional shopping mall and create a more vibrant lifestyle center. And another way of looking at it is that this area is ripe for redevelopment. So what the applicant has proposed is M X D, Mixed Use District Zoning. And with that zoning designation, they've included a preliminary development plan which lets you know with a high degree of certainty the size of the building that's going to be located on the property, and major features such as a parking deck, surface parking, where buffers are proposed, and where things such as open space and community gathering area are proposed on the property. There is an area of surface parking that's approximately one point two five acres, located south of the Triangle Aquatic Center and adjacent to the Ivy Meadows subdivision. And where the surface parking area is proposed, there is a proposed buffer of fifty feet. Adjacent to the buildings on the subject property, there's a proposed buffer of a hundred and ten feet. So this shows you some changes that have occurred. Instead of the two hundred and fifty-foot setback, the proposed setback is now a hundred and fifty feet from the property line adjacent to Ivy Meadows, next to the proposed three hundred and eighty thousand square foot retail building. The building is proposed to have a maximum height of sixty feet. There's a parking deck, the surface parking which I mentioned, and then a four thousand square foot gathering area along the front of the commercial property. The applicant has proposed specific standards which include design for sidewalk, streetscape, light poles, specific building architecture, flags and flagpoles, and signage. This is the example submitted by the applicant which shows their prototypical design, which I think you will realize is internationally recognized. Important to note that the name of the user, the tenant, is not part of the zoning conditions. But we do know with a high degree of certainty who's interested in this property. And this is what their building looks like. So as part of their application, they are seeking this specific image and appearance with the building. There are other specific standards that they've proposed which can be considered because this is in a Special Planning Area. A parking reduction of thirty-four point two percent, a ten-foot wide streetscape adjacent to Convention Drive, reductions of spacing between travel lanes. They've proposed to keep the overhead utility lines, and I just want to note with that that that's not on the subject property itself, but adjacent to where some offsite road improvements are proposed. They've proposed sidewalk on one side of Convention Drive, forty-foot tall parking lot lights which is just slightly above the town standard, and foundation plantings along twenty percent of non-service sites of the building. This shows you the flagpole height proposed, which is ten feet above the Cary standard. We do have some examples where we've allowed taller flagpoles in athletic parks and in front of the Cary Art Center. The size of the flags is consistent with the Land Development Ordinance. And building signage is proposed to exceed typical standards by fifty percent. And they've also proposed a variety of different types of signage. What we might see in a building in another location would be uniformity between individually illuminated channel letters and panel signs or placard-style signs. So there's more detail on that in your staff report, but this is a good depiction of what they've requested. There's also a number of ground signs that have been requested as part of the proposal. This is an example of the welcome sign, the promotional sign, the small lightbox signs that are up close to the building. And here is an example from the applicant showing the location of this type of signage on the property and where they're situated and located. And the reason I'm showing you all this detail is because it's important that they make sure that these modifications are presented to council so that you have a complete understanding of this. And if it is approved, when a development plan comes forward, there's not going to be any problems with staff implementing the ordinances if it's been something that was approved by council. This is an example of one of the signature features that this applicant has, and this is their flag circle. They've proposed this in two locations. So it shows the eight flags with a rather readily recognized name of a future potential business owner on the property. The subject property is located south of Cary Town Boulevard, which is a major thoroughfare. There was a traffic study required as part of this rezoning which studied the replacement of two hundred and fifty-five-plus square feet of existing retail with the proposed three hundred and eighty thousand square feet for a net increase of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-six square feet of retail use. There were several traffic improvements that were suggested by the traffic study. The applicant has proposed to address five out of the seven improvements. The locations are shown here in blue. And they include the intersection of Walnut Street and Cary Town Center and Cary Commons, where they've proposed modifications to the approaches, widening and extending left-turn lanes and modifying the traffic signal to accommodate the changes. The intersection of Walnut Street and the AT&amp;T entrance and Cary Town Center entrance, where there's a widened approach provided. The intersection of Cary Town Boulevard and Convention Drive, which is opposite Principal Lane where Adams Elementary School is located. Again, restriping and widening and extending two left-turn lanes. And Cary Town Boulevard and the eastbound I forty ramp, where they proposed to install a traffic signal which would connect to the town's TV cameras and the automatic traffic monitoring system, and extending the outside receiving lane here. And then finally, installing a traffic signal at Cary Town Boulevard and the westbound ramp on Interstate forty. The site is not impacted by any stream buffers according to Cary's most recent GIS maps. However, field determination of such features will be required at the time of development plan review. There is a proposed street-side trail along Convention Drive according to Cary's Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. And this site is currently served by a Go Cary Transit Route and is in close proximity to a Go Triangle Transit Route along Walnut Street. As the plan moves through the process, staff is talking with the applicant about how future routes might work on the property, and this is something that is being discussed and evaluated with the applicant. Property owners within eight hundred feet of the proposed zoning were notified by mail. The property was posted and advertised. Community feedback has been pretty consistent over the last several months. There's been a lot of interest in this proposal. There was a neighborhood meeting which occurred here in the council chambers on March first. There were questions for the applicant about the specific proposal, the site design, the building height, the buffers. People really wanted to know what to expect. But the most frequently asked question was, when is the retailer coming? And when will we know who it is for certain? So in summary, this is an opportunity because this is a mixed-use development for the council and the Planning and Zoning Board to consider a new way of looking at development in Cary. This is a Special Planning Area, so the council can look at this on a case-by-case basis. It's not something that would change ordinance regulations townwide. It would be something specific for this property. As we evaluate the plan and the proposal and look at the Cary Community Plan, we'll take into consideration whether or not this proposal fosters development of a compact, mixed-use, and high-density destination center. Does this help to grow a sustainable, diversified workforce? Does this appeal to businesses and workers? Does it refacilitate development of an underperforming commercial center? As you can see in the staff report, we've already answered a number of these, and we'll continue to look at this as it goes forward. And staff is eager to hear your feedback as well. But it's now time for the public hearing, and following that, I'll be available, and the applicant will as well, for your questions.
Ms. Granton, before you leave, excuse me, and I don't usually do this before public hearings, but the media has incorrectly publicized this meeting, so I want to make sure everybody understands. So I'm going to ask you a question that I know you've stated, and I know I know the answer. But can the applicant change who this user is after, if it's approved?
Yes, yes.
So it does not have to be an IKEA.
It does not have to be an IKEA. It does have to be a retail store.
Very, very clear to everybody here tonight. This rezoning is about the type of use from general commercial to a mixed use. And it's not, no decision tonight despite what the TV said. And we're just hearing your input, not making any decision. And once we hear your input, we might make a few comments, but I doubt it. It's going to go to the Planning and Zoning Board, and they're going to review it and make their recommendation. And then it's going to come back to us for a decision. And even when we approve that, if it's approved, it doesn't necessarily mean there's an IKEA coming.
That is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you. Now, I would like to call back first, I'm going to open the public hearing for the official here, for seventeen REZO six, and I'd like to call back Ms. Fagan, if you would. Oh, the applicant is here to speak, Mr. Ms. Bearman, please, before we start with the speakers. I didn't know you were going to speak. I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. Really excited to be here. I've been working with the owners of Cary Town Center for over four years now. John Michelle, who's here with me tonight, was joking with me previously that it's felt a lot longer than four years as the, as Cary Town Center and ownership has mined for opportunities and tried to figure out what the best fit is, what way to reinvent, reinvigorize this particular piece of property. So very excited to come forward with something very concrete, fairly specific, and I'll get into it in a minute. In addition to our engineering team, our architecture team, our traffic engineers, there's one other person I want to let the council know who is here with a keen interest in the discussion associated with this case, and that's Bob Grimsley of IKEA. And I understand that, and you all have heard me say it before, land use cases are about land use and not land users. But the fact of the matter is, is that everything associated with this case is built around one user, and that is IKEA. There's not a whole lot of other three hundred and eighty thousand square foot retailers in the world, much less in the United States or in the town of Cary. And the detail that you see is because there's detail associated with one specific user. And I appreciate the mayor's cautionary points, but a lot of what we're going to be talking about as we move through the process are details related to a specific user's intent associated with the property. And as Deborah so eloquently put, that's detail that needs to be incorporated into the zoning case in order to facilitate that particular user's intent with the property. So speaking of IKEA, you know, IKEA coming to the triangle is important for the triangle. It's exciting for the town of Cary. It's incredibly exciting for the Eastern Cary Gateway, and it's immeasurable for Cary Town Center. The impact that IKEA or an IKEA-type user would have in this area is immeasurable for Cary Town Center. Big picture. There's a dark Sears, and there's a dark Macy's. And those are going to come down, so the number-one retailer in the world can set up shop in the town of Cary, in the Eastern Cary Gateway, at Cary Town Center. I mean, for me, from a big-picture standpoint, that's an incredibly compelling story. And we've, you know, CBL has looked at other opportunities in this area, and it's hard to imagine a better opportunity for CBL for this portion of the mall and for those two spaces that have recently become dark within the last couple of years. As I mentioned, the preliminary development plan, and Deborah did a great job of walking you through the detail, we have a lot of detail associated with that, and we look forward to working through the process with the Planning and Zoning Board and the council as we move forward. The feedback that we've received has been incredibly positive. There was a, you all might have seen on the, it was reported in the newspaper, I think there was some news media there. There was a community gathering that invited representatives from IKEA to meet the community. And from what I understood, they were expecting fifty to sixty, and they got closer to three hundred and fifty to four hundred people, to four hundred people to show up to talk about the opportunity. The feedback we have heard has been very positive. And I think that's reflective of not only this particular user, but I think the community's interest in seeing Cary Town Center become something better. And we believe this proposal that's before you all tonight, that when it comes back to you, will be something that will make Cary Town Center better. It will make the Eastern Cary Gateway better. It will make the town better. So with that, we will, we're here to answer any questions. I recognize we're early in the process. We're going to go to Planning and Zoning Board. We're optimistic that when we come back, we'll have a favorable recommendation because in addition to the big picture, from a Cary Community Plan standpoint, as the staff report reveals, there are a lot of the Cary Community Plan concepts and recommendations that are consistent with what we're doing. And I hope that you all share the enthusiasm that I have and that CBL has at this very unique opportunity for this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. This time, I'd like to invite Ms. Fagan back. Thank you for waiting. I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay. I learned a lesson tonight. Okay, my name's Elona Fagan. I actually live in the, what I now know as a heritage neighborhood. I'm on Sturtevant, right behind Cary Town Center. Thank you for listening to us tonight. I am pretty excited about the idea of that mall being I am pretty excited about the idea of that mall being revitalized. I've been in this town for six years, and it's been hard to watch it decay. I don't even go there anymore. I do not like going out to Crabtree or South Point. I'd like to stay local. I'd like to have a retailer that is a community partner, and listening to them and talking to them, and I was at the meet-and-greet at Cary Town Center, they seem to be willing to be pretty engaged in the community, which is exciting. The only concerns I have, which is probably what anybody else in our subdivision's going to say, I don't have an issue with any of the layout, what they're planning to do. The restaurant, I'm a little concerned about the lighting, right? They weren't really able to answer that question. So I'm on Sturtevant, the folks on Ivy Lane are going to feel it a little, feel it a little more. So I'd like some consideration to be made to how the lights are going to bounce into our neighborhood, because it's dark, it's quiet, and I like it that way. And then, of course, parking, driving, the roads. We live on Walnut, and obviously, when the mall was thriving, Walnut Street at Christmas time was impassable, right? You couldn't get out of the subdivision. And with the increased development, south of Tryon, right, I forget what the street becomes, Holly Springs or something, the traffic load on Walnut Street is much more significant than it was even three years ago. I can only imagine what an IKEA is going to do, right? We want people to go to 40. A lot of people will probably come from the south and come up that road. I would be hopeful that we could figure out a way to make it work and just not make it hard to get in and out of our subdivision. People are ready, you know, throttle down that road at a speed greater than the speed limit, and it's just been interesting to watch it develop. So those are my, really my only two concerns, because, you know, I take Maynard, crossing Cary Town Boulevard every morning to work and coming back, and that whole area is just so depressing-looking. It's just completely undeveloped and overgrown, and it would be nice if the mall went through its revitalization. So, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Wayne Rogers. I live at 1207 Fairlane Road, Hillsdale Forest subdivision. I am right between Crossroads and Cary Town Center. So I'm one of these people that has lived there since 1994, and have seen this mall go through some significant transitions. I also have dealt with the traffic in that area, so I can definitely speak to what it was like and what I anticipate it'll be like with this type of a tenant. I'm here to really talk and represent not only myself, but Cary Forward. And the reason I mention Cary Forward is because we did have an opportunity to invite IKEA to come to Cary and basically give the citizens a chance to sort of see what this was going to be all about, something other than just a meeting like this, because some people aren't able to catch these, and there was some opportunities to schedule this, and IKEA was very responsive. They had a lot of people, they put up slides. I was one of the people that enrolled the individuals that came, and I can assure you there were more than 350 people there that night. And the overall comments made by all of those individuals was, when's this going to get here? How soon is it going to open? What's it going to look like? And I suppose a few people were kind of interested in what kind of jobs it's going to engender. And one of those answers to that question was 500 construction jobs and approximately 300 jobs in the store. Why's this happening? It's primarily because this is what is known as an enclosed B or C-class mall. And these type of enclosures are generally structured around a major, big-box store, like a J.C. Penney's, a Sears, a Macy's, and these are the malls that are not doing very well. As a matter of fact, there's a website called deadmalls.com that you can go out to and see a rather strong history of what is happening with communities that have had these type of malls, and particularly the older mall. I'm going to talk about IKEA, because I believe that in addressing what this mall is doing in terms of its transition, is that you need to have somebody that understands what's going on in retail. And what we see in retail is sales are decreasing, annual sales are decreasing overall. And what is known as e-commerce is increasing. You have Amazon, which you have a lot of other companies around the world that are selling through the digital landscape. And now that we all have mobile phones, these people are also buying, searching, pricing through their mobile phone, and even ordering through that phone, and paying for it through that phone. And I think IKEA is one of these retailers that is uniquely suited to address this type of a changing landscape. The information that I'm passing around to you tonight has some documentable evidence from places that are looking at what is changing in the retail environment, and I think you'll end up finding that there's, the first graph on my handout shows that IKEA is the eighth-largest internet ordering company in the world. They've had 748 million visits in their stores worldwide, and their sales increased approximately 7% last year, which is outstanding. And I see I've got about 26 seconds left, so I'm going to wrap this up by simply saying that I really do think that this matches the overall Cary plan for the Eastern Gateway. It will make this a more viable center, and I certainly respectfully request that you all support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Next speaker, please. Could I get you to move to your left, please? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Sagretti. I'm a resident of Askem Drive and Ivy Meadows subdivision. We've lived there since 1983, and I've lived in Cary since 1979. So I've seen a lot of changes in the town of Cary and in Cary Town Center, and it's certainly fair to say that Cary Town Center is not flourishing at this time. I went to BB&amp;T today and found out that that was closed as well, to add to the list of dark retail establishments. I'll try to be succinct. I think this is a unique opportunity to revitalize Cary Town Center, and I would urge the town council to support this in whatever venue it arrives at the Cary Town Center. There, I know that there are some individuals who are concerned about the traffic. My point of view is that I would welcome traffic. There's really a very, very little traffic associated with Cary Town Center, and I think unless there is more traffic associated, it's not going to flourish at all. To close, I feel like the Cary Town Center and the Planning Department are going to support this, but I would urge the surrounding neighborhoods to support this as well. This is really, I believe, the best opportunity to strengthen Cary Town Center in the near and long term.
Thank you, Mrs. Sagretti. Next speaker, please.
My name is Catherine Fetner, and I've been here for over 20 years. So at this point, I don't shop in Cary very often anymore, and I think that's a loss. We've lost Sam's Club, we just missed out on Costco. So there are very few opportunities to get a store of that magnitude that isn't going to be replaced locally somewhere else, in South Point, at Crabtree, in North Raleigh somewhere. You know, the opportunity to bring a huge store, they're not going to pick up and build another one, you know, 30 minutes from here. So it's a seize-the-day type of opportunity. I will admit that I am one of the people that showed up at the meeting and said, could you beam IKEA here? Because I've been shopping at IKEA way before I came to Cary. So I still shop at IKEA, but that means I take that money, and I leave Cary, and I spend it somewhere else, as I do with Macy's. And oftentimes, even though there's a Belk in Cary's, if I'm at Crabtree, I'm going to Belks in Crabtree. So unfortunately, I'm afraid those stores aren't going to last very long either. Penny's is not doing well, they publicly said they're closing stores. Just today, they talked about closing more K-Marts, which we've already lost our Kmart. So, you know, the stores that are replacing them are not drawing individuals into Cary to improve our economic development, to bring funds into Cary, to bring jobs into Cary. They're small, they're specialized. It's just, it's just not happening, and I hate to see us lose the opportunity because a sign is too high, or not the right color, or, you know, when it clearly has been a business area, and we're looking to grow those areas and create unique opportunities, just like we've done downtown with our lovely new fountain, to bring people in and to get people involved in the community. I think it will bring jobs for people of all levels, and I think those are slowly drifting away, too. I mean, everybody can't work at a McDonald's or a fast-food restaurant, or a grocery store, and make a living, to be able to stay and live and thrive in Cary. So with those comments, I want to thank you all for at least listening and considering what I've said, and I appreciate the time that you extended to me.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ron Anderson. I'm at 1109 Manchester Drive in Cary, and I think I'm the senior resident of all the people who's been speaking tonight. We've been there since '77. We were there when Walnut Street was two-lane with cherry trees. I don't know if anybody else remembers that, but yeah, we do. And it has changed. Traffic has changed, everything else has changed. We were very excited when the mall came and all the things that came with the mall. Unfortunately, those things have been going away. And what I'd like to speak to tonight is what may come if IKEA comes, not just IKEA itself, a lot of people have spoken to that. But I think other things will come back, other things will follow. And the one small piece of data that I've collected to share with you about that has to do with the Starbucks at the Cary Mall. I spent a lot of time at Starbucks at Cary Mall. So I decided I'm going to ask the manager, what would happen if IKEA came to the Starbucks here? He said, "Well, we've heard from Starbucks in Seattle that if, in fact, that comes, we're going to renovate the store." I said, "Wow." Now, that's a small thing, a renovation of a Starbucks, but think about that on a macro scale. What's going to happen with other places? I think that's the bottom line here. I love IKEA, we shop in the one in Charlotte, because my daughter lives there, but IKEA will be a nice thing to get. It's the spread effect that's going to happen. I often am a mall walker in the Cary Mall, and just to walk around and see the empty stores, it's sad. It's sad for everybody. I want that to change, and I think you do, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone to speak at this public hearing?
Move this up a little bit. Hi, my name's John Sorrell. I am one of the neighbors that is adjacent to Cary Town Center. I live at 1122 Ivy Lane. I share a back property line with Cary Town Center, and I wanted to say that I'm generally supportive of the redevelopment proposal and the rezoning proposal. Really appreciate all the work that the development team has done in reaching out to the neighborhood and discussing the project, and they've given us a good understanding of what may come. Wanted to talk about a couple of items. One is traffic. We know traffic is going to come. Generally, I'm not overly afraid of traffic, because as Cary continues to develop out, that traffic is going to go somewhere, and a large part of it's going to go down Walnut Street, just to assume that the traffic generator be near me and increasing the values in the area as opposed to somewhere else. Couple of things that we have asked the development team for that I think could be a win for the neighborhood. You know, initially, the neighborhood had a 250-foot building setback, a certain height berm, and lighting. I think the biggest impact right now to the neighborhood is lighting, and the fact that the existing fence that was by zoning condition is somewhat dilapidated. As the zoning is modified to allow the building setback to get somewhat smaller, I think there are some easy things that could be done in increasing the height of the fence and bringing down the height of the lighting that would be somewhat helpful for the neighborhood. But again, I want to appreciate your time, and just wanted to express those thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing?
Good evening, council. My name's Matt Taggart. I'm John's neighbor. I also share property boundary with Cary Town Mall on Ivy Lane. I want to start by saying I think this is a better plan than the one for Topgolf. And the audience seems to agree. This seems like it's going to be a good fit. It'll bring better jobs, and there will be less negative impact on the neighbors. My concerns are with light and noise particularly. I agree with John, it would be nice to see an increase in height in that fence, and maybe in the material used. Right now, it's wood. It'd be nice to see something a little more impervious to sound. If you look at the picture, you can see the loading zone will be on the southern part of that building, and the applicant will be bringing in, I think, about three trucks per night. They'll only do loading and unloading during nighttime hours. So while the trucks may not be idling or anything like that, there will be backup noises and maybe people hollering during unloading that we'll probably hear. So I think a taller fence that's more impervious to sound would help. The photo that was showed of the vegetation on the buffer was really surprising, that was the most flattering picture I've seen of that. Those Leland cypress are nearing the end of their useful life. I go walk on top of that and pick up blown plastic bags that have gone to the top of the hill, and you can see that many of the cypress are being constricted by ropes that were set up when they were planted at the time, so their lifetime is very limited. So it might be wise to have an arborist come in and evaluate the health of the vegetation on top of the buffer and replace it as necessary. And, you know, the lighting is what's mentioned before, it looks like the applicant is asking for additional three feet. It looks like most of the lighting will be on the northern part of the building, but it would be appreciated if you would consider the impact of that on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for the public hearing?
I didn't sign up for it, I was late on a couple papers.
You don't have to sign up. I would ask that you give her your information after you speak.
I live on 1120.
Could you give us your name?
Well, my name is Francisco Alonso. I've been in the neighborhood for quite a long time, since probably 1998, I think. Like, I'm a neighbor with John, and I'm right up against the proposed, well, the buffers there, and then the proposed IKEA. I have concerns, just for those of us who live right there, I understand the economic excitement and all that stuff, but again, I do have major concerns about sound. But again, I do have major concerns about sound and the effect on us while they're in construction and even after, like the trucks at night and all that stuff. I think that it could, aside from quality of life for all of us there, it could impact us, our values of our house as well, trying to sell. Imagine during construction, trying to sell a house. I think that the, our property values would go down. So to me, if I were to support this, again, I hear a lot of people excited, but they don't live right there. For those of us right there, my concern would be, I do like the, I think it would be acceptable if there was a really good sound barrier and light, again, but the sound is the worst. To me, it would make more sense to at least have protections that they would be put there before any construction begins, so at least we're protected a little bit. For example, if I'm trying to sell a house and prospective buyers hear a lot of noise and all that kind of stuff, that'd be bad. So if we had that kind of thing, I'd be more supportive. So that's about the big part of it, so.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing? Anyone else for this public hearing? Going once, going twice. Do you like to speak? Please?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Jonathan Holland. I live on Tanglewood. I'm Mr. George. And we've lived here about 10 years. My dad actually grew up in the area in the 50s. I'm one of the thousands of commuters who use Cary Town Boulevard every day. So saw the study mentioning the two additional lights. I was just wondering if any additional options were considered, such as traffic circles or something like that. I've lived in Maryland for a time, and traffic circles at major interstate intersections are more common up there, and they actually work without constricting traffic too much. So just, you know, throwing that out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Dana Spector, and I'm a relatively new resident. I live in one of the apartment complexes off of Cary Town Boulevard, and I would like to thank you for considering this opportunity and this potential retailer. I'd like to reinforce the idea of traffic and safety on Cary Town Boulevard. I've noticed in the last six months, quite a few cars have been abandoned for days, and an enhanced awareness and overall concern for that safety and area is greatly appreciated. I'd also like to state again, for the record, that I moved here for an employer, and we continue to bring new people every single day. The addition of a retailer will only enhance this opportunity, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for this public hearing? Last call. I see no one. I'm going to close the public hearing. Ms. Granham, before I open it up to my colleagues, I want to hit some of the items that were mentioned. The fence, whose property is that on? Is that on the-
That is on the mall property.
And is that part of this proposal or part of the mall property?
They have proposed to maintain the vegetation and the berm in that area, and-
Maintain, or it sounds like some of these trees are about ready to come down?
Well, and I just wanted to point out, the photo, I actually just took that two and a half weeks ago, so when I went out to post the property. So it does look pretty good, but Leyland cypress do not age well. They are, they are not a hardy tree. So that is something that even with routine maintenance, you're going to lose some of those and replace them. And what's proposed by the applicant is a Type A vegetated buffer in that area, so that could mean replacing different trees.
Tell everybody what that is.
That meets a certain opacity standard that, it's not going to be solid, you know, that you can't see through it, but it's going to have a mixture of shrubs and trees so that it really does create a good buffer and block the view. So, you know, you've got a, you've got this conservation buffer that's in place where the berm is now, today, closest to Ivy Meadows and the fence on top of that area, and then an additional 60 feet of buffer area. Now, there is a streetside trail proposed adjacent to that, so there's going to be some changes in that area. But we'll clarify, we'll get the applicant to clarify if they're proposing to maintain that fence. Something that's a note of caution, I know it's a wooden fence, there's been mention of replacing it with something that's more of a sound barrier. That's going to impact some vegetation if you're putting something masonry in there. You've got to dig footings, you've got to, you've got to disrupt existing vegetation. So, you know, taking note of this, and we'll definitely talk to the applicant. But putting up a masonry fence or wall is going to mean losing some of the trees and impacting roots that have been established over 20-plus years, so.
So the next question I have was, I think it was the last speaker, talking about traffic circles. Since this is internal, we, can we require traffic circles? They have to propose that, right?
There are no traffic circles proposed as part of the-
Right. You can't require it, right?
Right. That's correct.
It has to be offered.
That is correct.
Would we?
Well, I mean, if we wanted them to entertain it, we could ask them to entertain it and see if it might be a better device than the traffic-
We could.
Yeah, and we can certainly hear what they have to say about it. They were not anything that was suggested as part of the traffic study. But, I mean, the applicant's engineer is here, so we'll certainly see what their thoughts are about that.
And then the last two things, lighting and noise. We have certain requirements-
Yes, we do. We have decibel levels that are not, there's no waiver or request for modification to any of the decibel levels in the sound. And while they've requested a slight increase in the height of the light poles, they've not requested any reduction to the standards for the spillover. They still have to have the downward-facing lights, and they have to shield them so that it's not going to cause disruption to adjacent property owners.
That's important to understand, that while the old lighting in probably the old mall has lighting going up and out, new lighting today has it directed, and it can't, it can spill over, but not nearly as much as it could in the past.
Correct.
Okay. Those are the things that I had circled. I'd open it up to Councilmember, but they want to make additional comments.
I'll go ahead. It's, first, I'd like to thank the applicant, Ikea, for their willingness to reach out to the community, meet with them, get them involved, get them engaged at the beginning of the process, and truly communicate with them, so folks really have an idea of what's happening in the process and what they're proposing, and all the heights and conditions and everything like that. So I think that's really helped as far as reaching out with the community. You mentioned one thing at the beginning, before we actually opened the public hearing, that, you know, while we're not talking about a specific user, just the use, one of the conditions of the rezoning is that the building has to look like what's on the screen, right? So if any other user wanted to do something on this piece of property, they would have to come back here for a rezoning.
And even have the signs and the colors.
That is correct.
Right. So they, there's not anybody else in the world that's going to operate out of a building like this that isn't Ikea. So-
University of Michigan Alumni Club.
Oh, my God.
The building would not be that big.
Moving on.
I'd also like to thank all the residents and everybody that has also been engaged in the process and have come out here to speak tonight, have sent us emails and so on and so forth. It's very helpful when applicants and communities work together at the front end and don't wait till they come here at the public hearing, and then all of a sudden, we hear all these concerns and issues, and it's a, it's kind of a crisis at the 11th hour. So that's always helpful. I heard a number of what I would call legit concerns tonight. Lighting in the neighborhoods, you know, if I lived right behind this, as thrilled as I would be that it would be coming, I would have a lighting concern. Noise is a legit concern. I hope the applicant, as this moves through the process, looks at ways to also address that. The dilapidated fence, you know, do you want a wood fence? Do you want a masonry fence? You know, I get what Ms. Granham was speaking about just a minute ago. Those are also legit concerns. You know, be careful what you wish for. Yeah, you might get a nice brick fence, but then all of a sudden, all the trees are gone. So I hope that as this moves through the process, they can work on that, and then also look into the health of the existing trees on the buffer. Other than that, I mean, it's just, I'm so glad things have a way of working out. I mean, a little over a year or so, we were talking about another pretty intense user on this site that I think a lot of us and citizens throughout the community were pretty excited about. But, oh my gosh, how glad I am that didn't work out. And to ultimately get a retailer like this, this is a huge get for Cary. I mean, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. The, as some speakers spoke to, the economic impact of this, the redevelopment of the Cary Town Center Mall, the, as this serves as a catalyst for future development, both here and across the street. This is huge. I did hear a concern about property values, and I see this doing nothing but increasing property values, even during construction, just because folks know it's going to be in Ikea. So that's not really a concern to me. Again, there are some legit concerns, there are some cons to this, but the pros far, far outweigh the cons. And I just, I can't tell you how excited I am for this and look forward to it.
And just to add to that, this proposal kind of goes along with another proposal we'll be entertaining soon, and both of them together. If you have property there, hang on to it, else it's going to go through the roof.
And I live right down the street.
I have a couple of comments and questions. One, I'm glad, Mayor, that you mentioned the noise ordinance that still has to be adhered to, and I think that hopefully we can get that information to the citizens so that they're aware, especially the lighting and noise ordinance. I can understand why people, when they hear that trucks are going to come in the middle of the night, what that might sound like, and we'd like to do what we can to alleviate their concerns. I did want to bring up that one thing that I read in the staff report. As we've been talking about the Eastern Gateway, and we're talking about more and more people using multimodal transportation to get places, and people, and they think, oh, I'm going to go to an Ikea, I'm going to buy big, heavy furniture that I need a car for. But I also have been to many other Ikes, and people just go for the meatballs, or whatever. And so I do think that there'll be quite a number of people that will go to Ikea for a lunch or a dinner, people across the street from, at the retirement community, which will walk across the street. So I saw in the staff report, there was a comment about the option to install a six-foot-wide sidewalk with a two-foot or a two-way cycle track, which would talk to the bike lane. I think that would be a great place for that. I'd like that conversation with the developer to continue. I think we will see more connection between the both sides of the Eastern Gateway, especially as we talk about both sides of that, both sides of Cary Town Boulevard developing. I also think that's great for the folks at the TAC, because I think there'll be a lot of people walking from the TAC, you know, you send your kids over there to swim, and you go shopping and get a meatball. I mean, it's just, it's a natural progression. I'd like to make sure that the safe connectivity between all these properties is aligned. I couldn't really tell in the staff report, I know there is a sidewalk to TAC, but I think it's on the other side of the street. It's not on the same side of the street.
Right. And the proposed multipurpose trail is on the east side of the property, and the TAC sidewalk is on their side of the property as well.
So that would, just thinking about that holistically would be great for, as the developer makes its way through Planning and Zoning Board.
Ms. Yurha, you want to finish this side of the table before I turn my head?
Sure. Save you the trouble of turning your head. This was a great public hearing. Mrs. Granham's presentation was thorough and clear, wonderful. And I think every one of the speakers was knowledgeable that came up to speak. The lighting concerns, noise concerns, the vegetation, the fence, I trust the applicant will be talking to some of those Ivy Lane people and other folks to resolve that. And I do think our requirements will come into play there and not really cause a problem. And I hope the Planning and Zoning Board talks about some of those details as well. But the speaker said it all. This is the number one retailer in the world, and one of the other speakers sees the day. And I think we need to remember that as we move forward.
Very good. How about this end?
Well, I thought of, I thought of a couple of cons here, but it's kind of, you know, an odd thing to think of. I hate losing the available parking lot for the Tarheel Sports Car Club to have road rallies, because they don't have to drive so far to the sports car club, or for the Mustang Club to have car shows. But once people are shopping there again, those parking lots will be full of cars, and we won't be able to do that. Also reminded, when I was, about 1990, I went to Kmart as a vendor to Kmart in Michigan, and this is a, this is a con. This is the three reasons people shopped at Kmart, the guy told us. Number one, it was easy to find a parking space. Number two, the aisles weren't crowded. And number three, there were no lines at checkout. And he said, "Those are the wrong three reasons people should shop at Kmart, and that's why Walmart's beaten us up so bad." Clearly, that was in 1990. Clearly, he was prophetic, and it all came true. The Kmart was downhill. So I think that's the idea, that we've got a, easy to find a parking place over there now, but there's no place to shop. I'm excited about the redevelopment. I am concerned, I didn't see a note here on the, so the building height, what is the parking deck height specified?
It's going to be a two-level parking deck, and so it's not going to be above the building height. It's going to be tabletop-style parking deck, so people parking on the parking deck top level would be able to go into the front of the store.
Okay. Wanted to clarify that. And then the lighting, the downlighting from the 40-foot poles, is there no uplighting on the building, or how does that?
They've not asked for anything as part of their modification, so any lighting on the building would have to be downward-facing and shielded properly as well.
Great. That's good for the neighbors to know. And then the, on the sound, on the noise, I realize probably the construction sound's going to be the loudest part of this. I would anticipate from having, having sat in class at Cary High School when they were building the mall the first time, that's further away, and it was noisy. Of course, we didn't have air conditioning back then. I don't think we had air, no air conditioning in the classrooms. The windows were open, and the red dust came in and the noise came in. But I think that's the main thing. So the noise ordinances that apply are applying for the construction as well as the completion.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to promise that there's not going to be a phone call or, you know-
It was a decibel.
There is a decibel level, right.
They apply both to the construction-
They apply, right.
And after it's completed. That's what I was clarifying.
Exactly. But there will probably be a phone call, as there is with any new construction project.
Sure. Okay.
Ms. Robinson?
Okay. I'll take this conversation in a different direction. So, you know, I feel like I'd be irresponsible if I did not scrutinize the modifications that they're asking for. So first, just kind of from a high-level perspective, our vision here is to foster a mixed-use development. And I kind of, I don't know how, like, the right analogy about how I feel about the Ikea. I mean, I think it's great for Ikea to come to this region. I just need to make sure that this is the right location for the Ikea. I need to make sure that we're not overwhelming this immediate area with something that is so large in its size and presence. I also need to make sure that it's actually going to do that job of fostering a mixed-use development. There are indicators to me that give me concern about the modifications that were requested. The foundation planting reduction down to 20%, that concerns me. The thing I don't want is a gigantic box that's not softened by vegetation, that will look very utilitarian, and I don't know that it's going to have that look of a building that will then transition or be harmonious with mixed use, should that come to the west side of this property. The sidewalk, having only one sidewalk on Convention Drive, that again, does not foster a mixed-use environment, and something that we'd want. For me personally, I mean, everybody's different. I don't know that I would want the truck-loading area closest to our single-family homes. I would have oriented this building completely differently, and I know it's probably way too late in the game to ask them to reconsider orienting it, but I need to understand exactly how they're going to handle a truck-loading zone adjacent to single-family, such that it's not going to be a nightly burden to everybody who lives nearby. I kind of consider that kind of like the tushy side of the building, and I would have probably oriented this building to look- probably oriented this building to look better from the other side. A very important question I have is, where else is there an Ikea that is a player or a component of a mixed-use development? Because I've been to three IKEAs, um, Carolina, Maryland, and Virginia, and each time, they were in, uh, environments that were more very large, big-box environments, and not in what we had envisioned for this site. So, I would just like to have you guys give me some samples of where it really works as a mix, a component of mixed use, and I'd like for Ikea to tell us what components they embedded into their property that really allowed it to be harmonious with a mixed-use development. What is it that I, that I don't see now, that I will see when I get there, when they build it, that will make it harmonious and, um, appealing to walk from this building into a, a, um, mixed retail apartment or office, you know, environment? I would've liked this better if this had come as the entire mall site, rather than this in isolation, because it does give me some concern that we're gonna build this with this vision, like, oh yes, and this other stuff can come, 'cause we've seen some renderings of what could come, but it will be a, um, impossibility to achieve because of the, the size and presence of this building, that it, it won't encourage that type of, um, scaled development that we've been talking about. So, those are my big things. Um, I clearly need to come into the office and meet with staff and see a bigger model than what I can see in a staff report, because it's hard for me to really dissect what I'm looking at, especially around that loading zone and that diagonal wall, which to me ought to be the most buffered section of the project. Um, I need to be able to see that, I need to understand why it's okay that we would not have them bury utility lines when that's our standard, you know, for most locations, so I wanna understand that as well. So, I have a lot of research I still need to do to get comfortable with this. I'd like to have Ikea provide some information, so, um, they can help me get there, and it, this is not to say I'm anti-Ikea, I like Ikea, I've been to three of them, but I wanna make sure that I'm not in my fervor for Ikea overlooking the details that will make or break this area.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. Smith? It's your district.
Yeah, it is, and it actually was kinda neat tonight to see some people speak from Ivy Lane that, uh, uh, probably weren't born when we put that wall up. So, uh, uh, you know, uh, back in the eighties, one of the exciting things was working with the, that neighborhood in Ivy Lane, uh, to, uh, get the condition with the Sears expansion of what we like to call the Great Wall of China, so not only did we get the berm, but we got the trees on top and then the fencing. Um, I think the lessons learned from those days is, and things I would caution some of the residents, is, uh, let's just keep working with, um, the developer on the conditions that we're trying to alleviate, rather than the solution. Uh, in the end, fences get ugly fast, and as was brought up earlier, with brick and that, you then run the risk of the vegetation. Um, you know, what I wanna see is, I wanna see that community protected as it was, uh, back in the late eighties, when, when that, that was built. And, um, I want the challenge, uh, to be put back in, into the development, uh, the developer, to look at how you buffer those sounds, and that also includes the loading dock. I'm, I'm, you know, the jury's out on that, but, uh, it ain't the first time that loading docks were nearby, and what you have to have is the right buffering and the right, uh, noise mitigation and all that, so, you know, um, I don't wanna say I don't want it, or I wanna, you know, reposition, but what I do want is, I wanna have some assurance that the concern of that community is, is addressed, uh, somehow in the development. So, um, you know, those are, those are my, uh, thoughts on it. Uh, you know, Jennifer, you bring up some interesting things on mixed use, but as you've all shared with me from the Atlanta trip, as you see the symbiotic nature of the things going on across, you know, like, I think a lot of the traffic and what makes that site very attractive for Ikea is not the Walnut Street side, but the Cary Town Boulevard side, and I think the way that's, um, that's mitigated, along with the potential of the development on the other side, will, will help also protect those, those older communities there. At least, that's my hope, and that's the message I wanna get out to the staff as they're, they're looking at, uh, these things. And as we also learned in, or you all have shared with me from your trip to, to Atlanta, that whole concept of a, uh, mini-convention or some of the other uses, uh, would then actually, uh, complement this kind of a big, big box. So, there's a lot of unknowns, and I, I know that. You know, my appeal to Ikea is you're a, uh, you're an international, uh, quality place, um, you're coming into an area that is abutting some established, mature neighborhoods. Uh, please be a good new neighbor, work with them, address those concerns, and it is my district, and I'm always around, both for the, uh, the neighbors and also for, uh, the developer, uh, to help in any manner, shape, or form. So, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Um, what?
I have one, just two more questions, um, since, uh, Councilmember Robinson brought it up. The, uh, overhead lines that were being asked not to, or, or that they were asked to, where are, where are those located?
Those are in the vicinity of off-site road improvements, and they're highlighted here in yellow. So, these are overhead, existing overhead power lines in the, in the yellow. They are off-site, they are not on the subject property site, so, um, the applicant can provide more detail with that, but they did say that, that this was something that was a result of conversations with a utility company about the difficulty of relocating those in those area.
Right, and so I, I, I was just making a comment that, I'm not necessarily sure I agree with you that they would have to do that when we didn't make SaaS do that.
I just want information about why, why it's justified, you know?
There's a, there's an explanation, um, that the applicant's provided to that, and we can flesh that out a little bit further as this goes forward.
That'd be helpful.
The other one, uh, that I wanted to bring up is, um, as we go through some of these, I remembered, um, there are a couple of IKEAs that are, um, in mixed-use developments. I think there's one in Albuquerque, maybe that's more of a mixed-use, I know the one that conquered Mills is part of a mixed-use development. Um, so, I, you know, I, the one that was visited in Atlanta is kind of part of a mixed-use, so maybe some of the pictures associated with those would certainly, um, help those of us who haven't been to it see what that might look like, but I think, um, those are all examples that might help see how it fits in.
I just wanna see how it fits in.
Very good. So, the next step for this is it goes to our Planning and Zoning Board. If the applicant changes anything between now and that public, uh, that meeting, then there will be another public hearing on that change.
Correct.
And that, uh, is likely to be at Planning and Zoning?
Um, typically, with a project like this, it's two months. If they don't propose any changes, if they just come back with some better explanations, it could conceivably go forward in a month, but, um, typically, there's a minor adjustment here and there, and it triggers a second public hearing, but it, the information will be on our website as soon as possible.
And, and so stay tuned to the website, and if you can't find what you're looking for, contact us and we'll point you in the right direction, or answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Granham.
Thank you.
We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item, and our only discussion item, is the issuance of general obligation bonds. For the record, I have to read into the record three resolutions and one order, so I'm gonna do that now. One, resolution making certain findings and determinations and authorizing and ratifying the filing of an application with the local government commission in connection with a proposed issuance of general obligation refunding bonds by the town of Cary, North Carolina. Two, order authorizing thirty-five million-dollar general obligation refunding bonds. Three, resolution providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed thirty-two million-dollar general obligation public improvement bond, Series 2017A. Four, resolution providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed thirty-five million-dollar general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2017B. Now, Ms. Karen Mills of our staff's gonna report what all that stuff meant to the council, and we may take action.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. So, we have great news tonight about another step in the progress of projects approved by the voters in our November 2012 referendum. We recommend Council approve these technical actions that will allow us to move forward on a September 26th bond sale that will finance thirty million dollars for fourteen capital projects. We also have great news about the potential opportunity to save money by refinancing some of our existing debt at a lower interest rate, and that will require Council action. I'll start by taking a couple of minutes to provide some background on municipal debt for people watching who might be new to this issue. The town pays for many capital projects with debt, and for projects like streets, parks, and fire stations, unlike a home mortgage, there aren't any assets that a lender could repossess and sell to cover the debt if a borrower failed to make the payments. For these type projects, the financial markets will make a loan by buying a government's bond and accepting a promise to raise the tax rate as necessary to make the payments, as long as the taxpayers have expressed their approval through a public vote. That's known as a referendum. Bonds backed by property taxes are known as general obligation bonds because they are secured by the government's general obligation of its taxing power. For most general-purpose projects like streets, parks, and fire stations, the interest that lenders earn from local governments is exempt from income taxes, and as a result, the town can earn and enjoy a lower interest rate on its debt. General obligation bond sales in North Carolina are typically managed by the State of North Carolina Treasurer's Office staff, whom we generally refer to as the Local Government Commission. They manage a competitive bid process that serves to secure the lowest net interest cost through market competition. Banks and investment firms bid on the bonds as a whole and then sell, sell the bonds, usually in increments of five thousand dollars, with varying maturity dates, to their individual or institutional customers, such as insurance companies or mutual funds. Issuing bonds requires a series of technical steps and external professionals, such as bond attorneys and independent financial advisors, to address the heavy tax regulation and legal terms associated with dispersing government debt across the financial markets through the initial bond sale and the subsequent secondary sales that take place over the life of the bonds. This process also involves a bond rating, where three independent credit rating agencies express their opinion of the town's creditworthiness. The town enjoys the highest possible credit rating, known as AAA, from all three agencies, and we expect to maintain this noteworthy award. This competitive bond sale that we recommend action on tonight is scheduled for the local commit, Government Commission to hold on September 26th. It's the second sale of the bonds authorized by the November 2012 referendum. The town borrows money as needed, um, based on the schedule and spending activity of the bond projects. Our first sale was March 2014, and after this sale, there will be seventeen million dollars of voter-authorized debt available for projects. A list of the projects to be funded with this bond is included in the staff report, but I'd like to highlight three of those projects. Two transportation projects, the Carpenter Fire Station Road Improvements and Green Level West Widening, will use fifty percent of the proceeds, or about fifteen million dollars. Transportation projects account for over eighty percent of the projects financed by this sale. A park project, the White Oak Greenway, will also be financed, and it will complete a key east-west greenway connection to the American Tobacco Trail. With, while these projects total just over thirty billion dollars, the legal documents presented tonight seek your authorization for up to thirty-two million dollars to ensure that we have the flexibility and capital-funding resources that are in the town's best interest. This chart shows the town's existing principal and interest payments for the general fund and the new debt service that would extend for twenty years into 2037. Also different from a home mortgage, general obligation bonds are repaid with level principal payments, so that the payments decline over time. And this prudent structure, set forth by North Carolina state law for projects like these, ensures that the town has debt capacity for the future. This graph is based on assumptions that the town, bonds will cost the town less than three percent in average interest expense, and if our interest rate forecast holds true, this new debt will require two-point-four million dollars in new debt service in fiscal year 2019, and will decline to about one-point-four million dollars by fiscal year 2037. You may recall that we routinely watch the financial markets for opportunities to refinance existing debt to lower our interest expense, and our second piece of good news for the evening is that we have identified an opportunity to sell another thirty-five million dollars of bonds to refinance certain portions of our existing debt at a lower interest rate. By combining the new debt and the refinancing bond sales, we can take advantage of sharing these fixed costs required to issue debt. In the current markets, the numbers indicate that the town could save one million dollars in interest expense over the next eleven years.
Say that again.
One million dollars over the.
I just like hearing it.
One million dollars in interest expense over the next eleven years. The bonds that are eligible to be refinanced include both general fund and utility fund debt, and the savings on interest expense would be prorated between them fifty-three and forty-seven percent respectively. Council has adopted a prudent policy that requires any refinancing to provide at least a three percent net savings on the existing debt service of the refinanced bonds. If we sold these bonds today, the market would provide us about three-point-four percent savings on the interest expense, but if the markets in September don't hold, not, are not favorable to provide at least three percent, we will not sell those bonds and will wait on a better opportunity for the future. So, these four technical actions required by Council to move the bond sale forward for both the new projects and the refinancing, some of them address North Carolina state law and some address tax regulation that ensures our tax, our debt will be tax-exempt and therefore less expensive to the town. As the mayor read the full title of the resolutions and the bond order before, um, we will need to conduct four separate votes, so I can provide, um, a brief explanation as we go through them. The first action is the resolution that declares Council's intent to proceed with a thirty-five million dollar refinancing, and that was Attachment A in your staff report, and staff recommends that you approve resolution, the first resolution that the mayor read.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous.
Thank you. Our next action addresses the bond order, included in the staff report as Attachment B, further technical steps to authorize the refinancing bonds, and requires me to file some technical documents with a town clerk that attests to the town's total debt and declares the expected interest on the refinancing. These documents are Attachment C and D in the staff report, and staff recommends that Council adopt the order regarding the refunding bonds.
Is there a?
So moved.
Here's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous.
The third action addresses details such as specific wording of the bonds for the new debt, and is Attachment E of your staff report, and staff recommends that Council adopt the second resolution and the third item that the mayor read.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous.
Thank you. The fourth action, like the third, establishes details for the refinancing bonds. This is Attachment F in your staff report. It also references an escrow deposit agreement, which outlines how the bond proceeds would be held until the refunded bonds can be paid off. That's included in your staff report as G. And for this fourth and final action, staff recommends that Council adopt the fourth action that the mayor read, the third resolution.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
Yes. I, I just wanna thank Karen, you and your staff, for everything that you do to help save the town money, keep us fiscally responsible and everything. It seems like every few months, you're coming to the podium with some new opportunity that saves Cary taxpayers tons of money. Uh, in this case, you're gonna save us one-point-one million dollars over eleven years, I mean, that's real money. That could actually pay for a greenway connection to downtown, if I remember correctly.
A penny on the tax rate.
Exactly, so, just thank you, kudos, please tell the rest of your staff how much we appreciate you guys and everything that you do for us.
Yeah, I was actually gonna do that after this motion.
I wa, I didn't know if that was gonna be the end of the meeting, so I wanted to get it in.
But, but she does have a rock-star staff, and she's a rock-star herself, and, and thank you for all you do. You guys are really sharp, and they're on top of everything, and they don't miss an opportunity to save us money, so, that's really great. Other, all right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous.
Thank you very much, Council, and I do wanna recognize our Deputy Treasurer, Mary Beth Huber, who's here with us tonight. She does all the heavy lifting on this work, and it's, like, we couldn't do it without her, and so we really appreciate Mary Beth. She's a tremendous asset to our staff.
I got to, yeah, yeah, yeah. I got to travel with you and her to the bond-rating agencies one time, and I could see her in action, and she's pretty amazing, so you have an amazing staff.
One of the best things I did was hire her. Thank you very much for your patience. Thank you very much for your patience through all these technical actions, and we appreciate your support to take care of our financial affairs.
So that concludes our agenda. Unless there's an objection, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Here's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn. Thank you.